And there's a county employee handbook meeting Monday at ten and a Heartland Port Authority meeting Tuesday morning at seven thirty with the chamber.
Okay. Uh, chiefs meetings tonight, I'm not gonna make it. Renegades I won't make because I gotta be on K W A S at eight. Uh, Steve Sirloch's got a Patriots Day meeting at noon. Saturday's the Y M C A fiftieth anniversary gala. Sunday my article's in the paper on Father Elias. And then Monday, I think Mark Ellinger and I are going out to South School to speak to the winners of the bicentennial contest. So, that is all I've got. Commission comments. Bids and contracts, assigning of the economic development contract with Polaris.
Jim, any questions?
No, I don't know the emails that I had that on. It's not attached to the agenda, so. Got roused over.
Here.
So, so essentially, we've added some of the services from last years to this year's. You know, while we wanna work with the strategic planning, or the Strategic Planning Commission, the steering committee, um, we're also gonna continue to additionally work with existing businesses, try to bolster new businesses, um, and, you know, continue to work with just the community partners, um, that we have been for the past twelve months. So with that, you know, I can take any questions, but I think we talked a lot through it last week.
Yeah, that's all my concern was last week, basically was getting the stuff that we had on the previous contract included on there, so we're good to go.
Yeah, I just want, are, are you gonna be duplicating the services that, that Market Street is doing?
No, 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 absolutely not. So, whenever, you know, and, and again, like, I'm not up to speed, so like, you know, sooner than later, I'd like to talk to, you know, you, Sam and Chris, you went to the meeting yesterday, just to see kinda where they're at. Once, once, you know, I, I see we can provide real value whenever, um, Market Street gives her final proposal, um, and then we wanna really help out and come in on the implementation side. So that's, you know, merging the strategic assets that we see can really help Jefferson City for, you know, if this new economic development group, um, is formed, you know, and, and, so looking at what we've been working on and identifying, you know, that just what, what they see as opportunities, so that whenever they bring on a new person, or however that looks, we just wanna be helping out with those conversations, because, you know, John has true experience in identifying regional growth, regional economic development opportunities to be a Wilkins sounding board for the entire organization.
So is Market Strategies doing something after they do the study?
Yeah, they're working on creating a whole new entity, and that's what I, I wanna, I don't wanna have two different organizations doing the same thing and duplicating and, and, you know, it, we, we need one organization and it needs to be pursuing the same goals and, you know, so, I'm like, um, you know, this is on a month-to-month, but it might be somewhere down the road, you know, either we combine with them, or we, we, we don't need your services anymore depending on what they're doing.
And that's, that's why we're at a month-to-month, is because, you know, they're kind of in the, and this is my understanding, so I haven't been privy to those meetings, but, you know, talking to some of the steering committee, committee members, is Market Street's providing the structure, we wanna help provide the implementation.
So they're providing the structure, they're not, they're not sticking around after they've done with the strategy, they're just making a recommendation, right?
No, and the, the thing with this is, they're looking at, their guideline is to create a new five oh one C three as of January one, so, you know, in the meantime, if you can accomplish something, then I'm good with it, but I still want you to work with, with, Market Street, or, yeah, yeah, and just, and, then.
Right. Well, and that's, and that's kinda how the whole, as we talked about last week, was, you know, when we started talking about, you know, regional growth and how that's kinda been the trend on how these really kinda form, and then, um, you know, Market Street kinda came with this whole regional growth, it's like, well, again, we're having the same conversation, let's put everyone in a room, um, and really use, you know, John's expertise to be a sounding board on how this could look.
So, Market Street is really just doing the strategy and coming up with a plan to lay out the implementation. It's the steering committee that is gonna finalize the direction that this new economic development group goes, but, I mean, there's not been a new group formed yet.
No.
There's not a new director hired, and so, yeah, we, we need someone pushing economic development, and that's why Polaris is here, and, you know, we'll, we'll see how that all ends up, and we'll see what kind of a plan they come up with, and then, and we can decide whether, um, we're part of that, or, or we need to stay where we're at, so.
I just, I think it's, you know, living here, and this is a very exciting time, you know, and to set the course for the next fifteen years is, is, you know, it's gonna be fun.
Did you ever find out what they paid for that Market Street?
No.
I was just curious.
I didn't.
Okay, I move that we sign the economic development contract with Polaris.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll get my hands on that, you know.
Okay.
See you guys.
Unfinished business? New business accounts payable review?
I asked for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of assessment plan.
This is the assessment plan that I think the assessor emailed to you guys at the end of the year, or beginning, end of January. We did add a statement from the auditor's office, and I did add a copy of the budget that was approved for this year. So, in order for us to get the refunding back from the state, we do have to have an assessment plan on file with them, just kind of a formality thing with them, is the way I understand. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it in, is to make sure the county gets their money.
I assume that he sent this narrative to the State Tax Commission already?
The way I understand it, no, they had not received ours yet.
With this narrative that Chris put in here?
I've talked to them about it, they know it's coming, and, and suggestion was that we put in a letter correcting.
Why don't we just take it out? Why?
Because he has to have, it's supposed to be, what's that letter called, Debbie?
Yeah, I forget it's.
It's supposed to be a letter setting out how he plans to accomplish assessment. He did this two years ago, too. But, so, that's what he submitted. And nobody takes it seriously.
No, and if, if we have a.
Chris is correcting.
Yes, we have, then I'm fine with that.
Actual copies of the budget that was actually approved. Versus the one I got didn't even have a budget in it. It has part of it, too, that you have to submit a budget.
Good with it, Jeff?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same with you.
I move that we sign the assessment plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, discussion of sheriff's additional software licenses.
So, whenever you, you guys approve the positions, uh, we took into account everything except for the licenses for them to get on Interpol, to be able to do reports and stuff. So what it is, it's gonna end up being seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. We wanna take that out of contingency, there is a contract designed, Jill's already signed off on it.
This is everything then, right?
Hopefully. I'm gonna say yes, but I thought it wasn't before, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we gotta have one with it.
And then I have a, a transfer here, I didn't know if you wanted to sign it while I was here, it's all filled out and I've signed it, if you wanted to sign this today or want to wait.
Is that for this amount?
Yes, sir.
Did you say please?
I did say please.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
Uh, just, like, this CAD is included in this seventy-one seventy-seven.
Yes, so, yeah, they write their bills a little different, so it's, it's that number, that number, that number, and that number, and that's it. Yeah, I can't figure that out. That's the show, Chris.
Did we're just signing this one for the?
For the contract additional license, and that's for the two years, after year two, that's gonna be added to our maintenance contract, fifteen hundred.
Just seems a little odd that, that's fifteen twenty-five, yet we're paying seventy-one seventy-seven.
That's the initial licenses to buy, the, and all the, the differences, net motion, Interpol, those notes, all of it to make it work, and then the, the contract that you sign is to add a fifteen hundred to our maintenance agreement with Interpol.
So we need to approve the expenditure for seventy-one seventy-seven thirty, and then sign this for fifteen twenty-five?
Yes, and then the.
A portion of it would already be in his budget, it's in April now, and then the additional is what he's doing the transfer for.
I get that, but I mean, so, we got a contract for fifteen hundred and twenty-five dollars here.
That's for, that's for year two, so that'll be in twenty twenty-two.
But it's already in, it's in the bill, or there's, there's a fifteen twenty-five here in the bill. That says year one, no?
Yeah, it's year one.
But there's no place to sign this.
Well, it's page one, page two, this is the contract.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I move we sign the contract with Huber Interpol for the mobile CAD. Five additional licenses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final closeout change order, South Brooks Drive stormwater improvements.
We had some overages on this project, and the total amount of the change order, this will be final closeout, is one hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars sixty cents for a grand total, final contract amount, seven hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. The two primary things, um, that were over on the project, the main one was subgrade stabilization, and then the next, we added about seven hundred fifty feet of road, um, additional roadway replacement to tie into a future project on Scruggs Station Road. We felt that it would be better at this time to do this connection, that way when the new Scruggs Station had proven on there in a few years, um, we would tie it better to that, not have a disconnected section. So those were the two main reasons for the change order, um, other than that, everything pretty much tracked according to plan. Any questions? And it's with, uh, B and P Patterson, the contractor.
So we didn't have any subgrade stabilization in, in the bid?
We, uh, we debated that when we were putting plans together, um, felt that it would be small, and we would just do a change order as needed. Proved us wrong, uh, we did a hundred percent of the road, needed subgrade stabilization, so, um, done it many different ways over the years, um, there's always unknown on that, and I'm more and more thinking we may just in the future just bid it with the project a hundred percent, that way there's no surprises.
Okay.
So, that's kinda where we're at.
And so will we be paying, uh, this final amount out with the, uh, with the retainage and stuff?
Um, he's already submitted all his final closeout documents, so the retainage, everything would go out with the final thing, that we won't have to hold anything anymore.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, I vaguely remember talking about that, too, and that might be a good idea to include it.
Yeah.
From the gig go, and then we have a smaller bill.
Then if we don't, it's a surprise.
Yeah, it, you don't know going into these really, and this is the first in the Westfield Heights subdivision that we've done a bunch of street replacements, so, thought we'd be okay, but.
That was before we started inspecting them, before we took the roads over.
I move, I move that we approve the final closeout change order for South Brooks Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, subdivision, street acceptance.
I got some additions, if you don't wanna look at your computer, do you want this hand out here?
I got it here.
You got it? Okay, you're good.
Sixteen of them?
Yeah, yeah, you want, correct. We have several, uh, street acceptances on the agenda here, and I can go through each one individually, um, some are final acceptance that have been in the interim period, and then a few towards the bottom are interim that are complete more recently and need to take into the interim period. And so Homeland Drive, and Pioneer Terrace Section Three, that's out there in the Pioneer Trail School area, uh, Weston Place, Darby Place, that Pleasant Valley subdivision off of Old Lomond Road, Buildmore Drive, Thorn Grass Drive, Thorn Grass Estates, off of kinda Henwick and Parkview Meadows area. Uh, and the number associated with each is the, the number on the sheets following the first page, and so Laura Drive, there's several sheets involved with that, this has been a, or had been an odd development, um, kinda incremental plats along the way, and so, to take in that whole piece of road that was still ready or needing to be accepted in, there was actually five different plats on that, so that's the reason for that, that's Laura Drive, out off of Scott Station Road, in the Grace Creek Valley acre subdivision. Lost Charet Drive is just a, a short little section of road that finishes out the Notches Trace Estates subdivision in Henwick, off of Henwick Lane, uh, Case and Court, that's L and C Estates, off of Elston Road, just a short cul-de-sac road, Kenview Drive, Sheridan Drive, um, that is actually an old subdivision that had just not been built, going back into the almost part of the early eighties, um, it, it changed hands, one of the family members bought out the others, Ken Kaufman, and so he's finishing out that part of that development, and that's off of Old Lomond Road, and then Summerfield Drive, Ken Vane and Summerfield Estates off of Old Lomond Road, Lakeland Drive, that's the last piece of Gary Shader's development in Lakewood subdivision, uh, the Route C and C C area, and then another Kenview Drive, okay, all those that I've, I'm, I'm getting into the interim now, uh, Summerfield and Lakeland Drive, those are interim, uh, Kenview Drive, uh, the second section of Ken Kaufman subdivision off of Old Lomond Road, and that, too, is an older, older road that had not been finished or not been built. He had to do a replat on some of those lots there, um, so there's a little bit newer plat that, that's associated with that, but that would be interim as well. Uh, Westward Lane, and I, okay, there's two, for Westward Lane, there's two plats associated with that, the Paradigm subdivision, uh, one little short stub section off of the first section when, um, Paradigm Road was built, and then Section Three is the rest of that road connecting back over to Pioneer Trail Drive, and then Territory Court is the cul-de-sac street off of Westward Lane, so there's several on the list here, um, hopefully it's, it's clear on the, the plats highlighted where those are, and how they associate with the plat and the different sections. Quite a bit of, uh, new streets we're accepting in, um, indicative of, uh, economics, um, you know, things being a lot better, and developers, um, starting to, to finish out some older subdivisions and then doing new ones, and a lot of, in those areas, so, um, just, uh, need, need the commission approval on these, and I have the court orders accepting these roads in, so, is there any comments?
Lot of roads that snow removal, is that gonna?
It's, it's an addition, of course, um, none of these are just real long, out-of-way type things, some of them.
You have like sixteen of them, but you only got about three miles of road.
Yeah, and, and it's probably not even that much, doesn't add up to that much road, and, and most of these are in areas where we're already plowing, so.
Already there anyway.
And, uh, all the interim ones that are just final acceptance, we were plowing anyway, so, as these things come along, we just absorb them into the system, and it's, it is an additional, um, task that we gotta deal with, but it's, it's just some of the guys, the guys driving files and our, our operation systems, and so you don't really see a significant change to what we're doing.
So how much of these are, are the houses built, and are some of these just lots that are, are still sitting, and how much is gonna get damaged when they start building these lots?
It's all of the above.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, and that, I think, as we move into the future, we need to upgrade our planning subdivision regulations and probably look at making some changes on how we accept roads. That is, it, it's always a concern, as these get built and houses are being built, there's always the chance that some of the roads could get damaged during that, that time period. Some of it has to do with how they build the road to begin with, um, one thing that, that I'd like to change is, currently we'll accept a piece of road, and maybe not the whole length, the developer will do a plat but not build the whole road, and do it in sections, that kinda lends itself to more problems than if they were to do all the whole road at once, um, so that, that's the things we need to look and change.
So, so I know some of these, we've, uh, we've taken them on interim basis, and so we're plowing the snow and we're maintaining them, and so, why can't we just wait until the subdivision's built out before we accept the final?
That, that's an idea, um, maybe even a warranty period, so many years.
I mean, I just, you know, it's, we have a lot of rock around here, and so you got a lot of big equipment coming in, and you got, you know, people chipping stuff, and you got high lifts coming in, and, you know, how they're crossing that curb, and, I mean, so you start breaking stuff, or even dump trucks crossing the curb, I mean, now we got stuff that's all busted up, and, and we've already accepted it, and somebody else is tearing it up, and we may never know, um, all right, can we, can we even make them fix it if, you know, if we go out and inspect that?
We can make them repair anything before we do the final acceptance.
Yeah, but if we're, if we're doing final acceptance now, how are we gonna make them fix it later?
The contractor will refer to the curb in front of their house, just because it's a negative on the, the sun, uh, we really haven't had a whole lot of problems in the past, if we see an area, most of the time when they back in, it's where driveway's going anyhow, so it's no good taking out, uh, you know, it's something, like I said, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Chris, but it, it's something we can, right now, it's not an issue, but if, if when we do update the subdivision or regulations, that's something we probably should look at, I don't think the city accepts them until they're.
The city, it's, they don't do an interim, they accept it when it's complete, and complete could be right away, it just depends on if it's when it's done, not when all the houses are built.
They have, I think, a complete section, they don't take parts at the root point we do, so, we'll take a part of a, a street as long as there's a paved turnaround for us, um, so, we can get ourselves out, turn around.
I think we do need some kind of a simple legal agreement that they sign, just, I'm kinda, it, hey, so we, we haven't had any problems, but, um, I, I just soon have a piece of paper they signed saying they would.
Well, it's on what you definitely look at, I know, um, we've been talking in the planning commission about updating regulations, and that's something we can definitely look at bringing in there, so.
I don't know what you want them fixing, what you're talking about, if they run over the curb and break the curb, 'cause if you build a house and you're selling it, or you're building it yourself and you have a contractor doing it, you're gonna have whoever fix the curb, you don't wanna bust a curb in your front.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So, that's why we don't have a problem with it, 'cause historically, they take care of it themselves.
I mean, there, there's been times that the curb is busted, and, and when that happens, we've told the developer that you need to fix this, and they get it done.
Yeah, I don't think there's ever been a problem, but if it has correctly, I, I don't know.
I know what has been a problem is, um, open lots sitting vacant, and we got mud all over our streets.
Now, that's been a bigger problem.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And so, anyway.
That's something that we do work with and try to work with, the builders, and just get them to clean it up, but it, it's an ongoing issue, it's the last thing a contractor wants to do is put up self-bans, and then it's too late, and somebody's gotta go clean it up. We couldn't get better than enforcing that, there's things we can improve upon, we, we do try, but it's something that if you're not out there seeing it regularly, it can happen before you know it.
I think it goes in spurts, you'll have it happen three or four times, and it doesn't happen for a while, so, ticks people off, they're driving home in these nice subdivisions and trying to pull on their driveway and have chunks of mud flying up in their driveway and their garages, so, and then we end up having to have to clean it up sometimes, so. I don't, the other thing we could do is if we end up having to clean it up, that we never know exactly who did it either, I mean, sometimes you can see the tracks, but the plumber's gonna blame it on electrician, he's gonna blame it on the dump truck, and especially during springtime, it gets to be a mess, so. I think it's a, I don't know, not as easy as it sounds to try to enforce this stuff.
It should all come back on the property owner, I mean, you know, or the con, main contractor or whatever, so, I mean, I'm sure nobody likes to hear that, but.
Well, we are still working, we haven't recently, but we are working on our stormwater ordinance that would incorporate some of that, and that would be also a part of the planning subdivision regulations, that when we do update, they would all be rolled into one document, so, but then it goes back to enforcement, we still have to be able to enforce it.
So what's this little, uh, section of Westward Lane off Paradigm Drive?
If you look at number fifteen, when they, when Scott Shaper Cutter bought that remaining part of that whole subdivision, the first road he built was Paradigm Drive, from Find Your Trail down to, or up to Rainbow Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And he built that, just that little section of road, just to tie that in, that way, when he sold those lots, if somebody wanted to front that, or put a driveway off of that, they'd be able to do that, and so just that little highlighted piece was built, and then that connects to Plat Three, Section Three, takes it on over to the roundabout.
So is that a, an interim acceptance, or?
They're both, um, interims, yes, we didn't take that little piece of Westward because it wasn't complete, and so it was actually his to maintain for a few years until he did the next, the next piece.
Is that the same, I mean, are we maintaining that, I mean, I see that something similar out at Lakewood, um, where we got a long section of road with no turnaround there.
Uh, there actually on that, there is a hammerhead on that, Lakewood.
On the end that he's still developing?
Uh, no, that's the end of his, it, if you look real close, it's kinda hard to read, but it does, it says, it reads on there, temporary turnaround, it's a paved turnaround there.
On the?
Number thirteen.
Right, I mean, there's a, there's a round, or a cul-de-sac on one end, but, I mean, I don't see any kinda hammerhead or anything on the other end, by one oh two B and one oh three B?
Just below one oh three B, it's just temporary, I can't even hardly see that fifteen by sixty or thirty by sixty turnaround.
And it's paved?
It is, yes. We don't normally allow those anymore, uh, cul-de-sac is, is the way to do that, um, going back years ago, you know, the developer would put in a road and put a hammerhead with the idea that it would continue on in the future, uh, but when it's a different property owner, there's no guarantee that'll ever happen, so, uh, we ran into these situations recently, where a developer wants to do this, and we say, no, unless you actually have a future plan to extend the road or whatever, you have to put a cul-de-sac. The hammerheads in those permanent type situations leave the issues when people want to put a driveway off of a hammerhead, and that's where we turn around with trucks when it's on snow, and also it's a place to put the snow and the plow, and it always creates a problem with property owners, so, we tried to get away of, from allowing that, but that, that thing, that plat had been approved, you're, ten, not twenty, but ten years at least ago, and that's when we were still dealing with that and not recognizing, or not seeing that those become the problems.
So we're gonna try to change that, too?
Yeah, and that's, that's already.
Plats need to be reapproved every year or?
Well, yeah, good point. Once it's approved, it's approved. And that they're getting the plans were approved too.
Well, yeah, but approved for twenty years into the future or? I mean, so so a contingency approval of the plan maybe or the plat?
That's part of the discussion we need to have before we, I agree with you. Contingent on future changes to our policies.
Right.
And that's just if a developer wants to hold something out there for five or ten years and I built something, that's the risk he's gonna have to take. Things might change and he may be retired to do something different.
Okay. You guys got any questions?
No.
Nope.
I do have the documents to sign. Everybody gets to sign with several.
Oh, wow. Wow.
I move that we approve and sign the 2020 subdivision acceptance court orders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that sufficient, Debbie? Or do we need to sign all these together? Or do we make a motion on these individually or?
Did I?
No.
I think we got a list and we approved a list of exceptions. I'm good with one at a time, or one times.
Didn't get writer's grant, Sam.
I know, oh, well. My wrist is better than yours today.
Use the right hand.
Use the right hand.
Backhoe purchase.
Yeah, backhoe. Discussion of backhoe purchase.
I'll say please if I click that way out there.
No.
We do have in our budget this year to purchase a new backhoe. We went out to three different individuals, I don't know if they're not individual, but vendors who got, moved out, I'm trying pricing on them. Our lowest one of these is to Crown, Crown, I think our local gear. That's for our 590 super end. Put the protection plan on it, it's a hundred and seventeen thousand and sixty-five dollars. We had one twenty in our budget.
Are these all comparable?
Yes. They are.
Just weight and power wise, they're all pretty much identical?
Yes, we've run through them very thoroughly, making sure of all that.
We went through, close actually operated as well as a crew that will be getting this backhoe. They've all operated, I know at least the John Deere and Crown, the case, they've operated. So I think that the backhoe out, the crew would actually prefer the John Deere. You know, it's still three thousand or whatever dollars difference, so.
And they're local. I mean, they're sitting out on the backhoe where we don't have to change the different kinds of filters or.
You guys good?
I'm good.
I move that we approve the purchase of the backhoe with Crown Power.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Court order, stop sign on South Country Club Drive at Scruggs Station.
When we met back on February eighteenth and the presentation on the stop sign out there at Scruggs Station, at that time I said, let's let's hold off on doing the court order until the city's traffic and transportation commission approves it and recommends to their city council. They did that last Thursday at their meeting. And so that's been approved, the first step of approval of the city. Now it just goes to the city council. It'll go to their meeting to get on the agenda.
All right, I'll pass it back.
There are some dates and scheduling and all that on the city council meeting times. It'll go to the city council, April sixth, I believe, will be a Monday. And then that'd be the first reading and then approved on the twentieth. So a little bit of delay in getting there and approved. But I would recommend that we go ahead and get this court order approved by county commission. That way, when the city gets theirs, we can right away that next week go out and put the signs up. Any questions?
No, I've seen all the emails and everything, so.
Horrible intersection.
A lot of accidents are.
That's such a, I don't know, it's so weird.
Yeah.
I think there's so much line of sight and everything there.
I think a lot of it is like Debbie's doing now, but we've got distracted drivers out there.
Very important work here.
Yeah, I don't know.
Still driving on your pedal.
I think the volume has really increased too over the past five years.
Well, the volume coming out of Westview, a lot of issues. They're coming out making a lot on the country club and the people coming in. There's a speed issue out there too. People are driving faster than they should, like it seems everywhere anymore, so I'm guilty of it.
I don't get it either. I lived out there and used it a ton, so never had an issue. But anyway, there are some, have been some accidents, so.
Lord Bishop, who was involved in an accident, wasn't there, it was a Leandro. And it was the same deal, guy turned in front of a vehicle and they collided. And then ended up with Larry sitting over across the street, so.
I move that we sign the court order for the stop sign on South Country Club Drive and Scruggs Station Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. County investments update. Give us good news. Give it, give us good news.
How can I do that? You got.
I know, you gotta see my portfolio. It's it's bad. It's bad.
It's gonna get worse before the end of the day.
It's bad.
Well, the good news is we are geniuses, all of us in this room, for doing the ladder portfolio. Because I'll just direct you right now to the very, go to the last page if you would. Because this is about the only good news we're gonna have. Well, wait just a second. So the last page shows that if you look at February the second on a three-month treasury bill, it's gone from one point thirteen percent all the way down to point forty-two basis points. And this morning, as of right now, I last looked, it was point twenty-four. So it's plummeting as we speak. And that's bad news in the sense that our demand deposits, you know, compliments of our depository agreement with the central bank, is based on that three-month treasury plus sixteen basis points on the first thirty million. The next four million is based on the three-month treasury minus fifteen basis points. And then above thirty-four million, which I think we've all schooled each other on this, that we're trying to avoid the point twenty-five overnight rate, that any monies over thirty-four are subject to that point twenty-five. I talked to an employee of central bank this morning and they acknowledged what I think is gonna happen at the next federal reserve meeting. They've already telegraphed that they're gonna drop the Fed funds rate another twenty-five basis points, maybe another fifty basis points like they did week before on a Monday. They had this surprise fifty-point drop in one afternoon. They may do that here on the seventeenth through eighteenth of March, which means that the overnight rate will drop even lower than point twenty-five. So everything's going into the tank. But the nice thing is, is if you'll go back to the second page, sorry for skipping around here. On the second page, investments at three for March eleventh. If you'll look in the column, yield to maturity, now that you know what rates kind of look like, we've got a rate through June of two point five seven, a rate of one point six seven through August. We have a rate of one point forty-four on that one-year treasury you all thought was sensible to invest in through, is that February twenty-eighth? Mine's blocked.
Yeah, is that February?
So February of next year of one point four-four, rates that simply are not available anymore. If you'll skip on down, law enforcement, we've got a May and a March. Both of those are receiving respectively two and one point four-five percent. Again, rates that have disappeared, they're no longer available. So this is the, this is the time that we recognize that what we were trying to do the last year and a half or two years to get you all to go out as long as you could, right? Even though the short-term rates were a lot more attractive in what's called an inverted yield curve, the shorter term, the thirty-day up to the three-month, even up to the six-month, are actually higher than going out a year, year and a half, two years or even longer. So it's kind of painful for you all and for us to think that you you don't want to invest in something that's gonna give you two percent. Instead, you want to invest in something much longer that's only gonna get you, let's say, one point twenty-five percent. It's not a very attractive decision to make. But in order to hedge your risk, that's exactly what you needed to do. That's exactly what we did. And that's why we have these higher rates that are, that apply to the treasuries we've already purchased. We'll keep them to maturity. And so we beat the market in the decisions that we've made the last year and a half. And I appreciate you guys going along with us. And so now we'll turn to our new, I guess, our new strategy in the new environment. And I'll let Mark quickly go through his normal worksheet that he presents you all. I'll let him go through that quickly.
Well, I think you're now familiar with my estimates. You've seen this form several times, but so I don't go through the whole thing step by step. But basically I project out for usually for a thirty-day period what cash we have available and how much the balance over thirty-six million or over thirty-four million that we would have available to invest in the in the next thirty days. And we're projecting that we will have two million available in the next thirty days to invest. Basically, what's gonna happen on on March thirty-first, we've got, if you see at the top, we've got a two million dollar maturing. And basically, that's what we're estimating that we'll have available to invest in the next thirty days. So Eric, if he can talk more about it. But basically, when that two million matures, we'll we'll reinvest it in a in a thirty-day. That would be the plan, correct?
Right, I mean, if you look at the last page again, if you look at March eleventh down at the bottom, the rates from one month to two months to three months, that's all point forty-two right now. Actually, it's lower as we speak. You have to go all the way up to two years before that flattened year, the yield curve turns back into what we normally call a normal or positive yield curve. So so the good news is we no longer have a an inverted yield curve giving us headaches by, you know, overlooking shorter-term higher rates and instead going out longer-term on lower rates. We don't have that headache anymore. But on the other hand, everything's now in the ditch. So what we're gonna do is, I think you all would agree with this. You like that word ditch?
Toilet.
Toilet.
Whatever you want to call it.
Right, so I think what we're, I mean, obviously what we need to do is just sit tight and invest in thirty-day bills from here on out. I don't think we need to come and talk to you all every time we have a treasury that's maturing. We'll just go ahead and work with Kristen and Debbie and just reinvest those monies, assuming that the auditor agrees that that money's still available into thirty-day bills. And we'll do that until we can come back to you with a a spread that looks normal. Shorter-term, lower; midterm, higher; longer-term, noticeably higher. Until that kind of starts to return, there's no reason to go out there and grab a super-low rate for two years and lock yourself into nothing for for two years. So we'll just chase short-term as long as it's the best game in town. Y'all have any questions?
No.
No.
And here, I'll say this real quick. I saw on March third, Wall Street Journal had a piece. There's a zillion of them right now, but this one sentence kind of captures, I think, for us laypeople who aren't steeped in financial world each and every day. This one sentence kind of encapsulates the the mood that they're in right now. And it goes like this. It says, panicked buying of U.S. government bonds in reaction to global spread, to the global spread of the coronavirus has set treasuries up for a fall. And so if you'll remember that as people flee the stock market, they want to get into something safer, they go to the best game in town, which is U.S. treasuries. Those prices will go up as demand goes up. And there's an inverse relationship between the yield on those treasuries, new treasuries. So they go down as prices go up. So everybody's fleeing the stock market. People are trying to find a place, a safe place to put their money. So the yield has plummeted in treasuries and it's just a matter of time. We'll just sit tight here for a half year or longer and that panic will go away. Prices will start to come down on treasuries. The inverse relationship, the yield, will start to come back up. And that's when we'll come back and talk to you all, okay?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's an roller coaster, just hang on for the ride.
I'm behind, I'm behind.
It's a roller coaster right now, so hang on for the ride. Don't jump off in the middle.
No. Okay. Anything else? I've got, we received the invoice for the Capital City Salute to America Foundation, which I think we have in the budget. We've had it in the budget already, so. Okay.
Was that attached to your email?
The contract, no.
Okay.
No.
It's just the bill.
Just the bill, okay.
I didn't look at the attachments, so.
Okay. And then we got the, are you gonna go to the West Central Commissioners Meeting next Thursday?
No.
I'm gonna try to go.
I don't know, I got it here. I'd have to just see what my schedule allows, but.
Okay. Anything else? Jeff, Jeffrey.
What'd I do wrong? Get Jeffrey on this up at some point. No, I think, I think that's it.
Just old business. I know we, I talked to Jesse about these flip chart things. This is the court one for their building and he is working on that for the rest of our building, so. I asked him for a copy of it, so keep a copy of the courthouse one.
Okay.
But I probably will be coming back to you when it is done to get some credit.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Chris?
No. I move we go into closed session for section six, ten point oh-two, one of the revised statutes of Missouri for real estate sub-two, legal actions sub-one, and and security sub-nineteen.
Second.
Roll call? Yes.
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 Okay.
I'm gonna.
I'll let you know.
Get ready to accept coffee. There's some signatures.